On your medical bill?
Yeah, seven hundred bucks. I'm gonna send them home. Time is it? I think fifteen now.
Wants you to pay thirteen hundred dollars. Can't just pay a hundred dollars.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna only pay the whole amount?
Make the whole payment or pay over time. Thirteen hundred and one dollars. They don't let me put in some right on. No.
Then they get nothing. How's brother Paul?
Fine, just immersed in his own world. Yeah, his trailer is really nice. The, the, um, other trailer he has.
Trailer.
His, uh, flatbed trailer.
Well, I've seen that.
Mm-hmm.
It's big.
Yeah, it'd be perfect for the let's see. It's thirty, three thousand pounds and the
It's got a ramp, gate on it.
Mm-hmm.
Does he sell them that?
Yep.
Companies of off work.
That'd take two grand. Paid four and it's pretty new. The GBWR seven thousand pounds.
So gross vehicle weight rating, that's the most it can weigh with the trailer and anything on it.
So could it take a five hundred gallon water tank?
Mm-hmm.
And some hay?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be perfect. We should buy it. But it has to be ready. This trailer right here.
Yeah, I've helped remove stuff on that before.
He got it off the street.
Did he really?
Yeah. And it's
Maybe I helped out. That one looks different.
It'd be perfect.
What's he doing in the furniture?
I don't know. He's taking shit. Storage dump, bringing stuff here. But he has tires for the other one, the twelve hundred dollar one.
So I think the twelve hundred dollar one. And, you know, it's a trailer that's designed to not go over fifty-five miles an hour. These military trucks don't.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's probably more than well rated enough for that weight, but the angle and stuff that it's running at probably isn't helpful. It doesn't have brakes.
It's great for the rez.
Well, driving over rocks, yeah.
Hat's gonna be ready tomorrow. I'm so excited. I get a new hat. Four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Really? Go write a check.
I'm gonna go down there about nine, twelve so I can replace the filters.
Okay. We'll have appointments at nine.
See that I need thirty and open up for me.
I can get that.
Close the gate. Yeah, I'm lunching tomorrow.
What?
I'm lunching tomorrow.
Well, you're opening for me too, because I have an appointment at nine. I can't be there at ten. Sinead O'Connor died today. She's only fifty-six years old.
It's you.
Well, it's Elaine. She texted us. What do you mean, what the hell?
What the hell? Why is my phone blown up?
Oh, now you know it's a text?
What is this? I trust.
I'll have to wait to go for my hike. I can do that for you. The sign looks very good. The prairie dog sign.
Everybody was giving a greet.
Good.
Sir, Paul donated that tank?
Mm-hmm.
Did you see where the crack is?
Yeah, he showed me. He tried to fix it on the outside. It didn't work.
So I could climb that?
Yeah, you probably could. I made the Washington Times with the prairie dogs.
Shit. I should pull this up under this.
It usually comes in handy.
What's the Washington Times?
I don't know, but I made my little prairie dog story made it.
From the Sun?
Uh-huh.
Have you seen it in the hole?
Um, I'm trying to find it to send to cable, but everything else is popping up.
There's a scratch on the fence post.
Do I have to do it? Like, is this his article?
Hey, John, can you hear me? Your little circle is blinking. I don't know if that means you're talking. I can't hear you.
Yep, I heard you, John, just now.
Yes, I'm looking for the air. The mic, mic is on automatically in a lot of circumstances, so, um, I can hear you perfectly well, so.
And I've got you good now, too, so whatever you did worked.
Hey, I, I'm not too sure what works with Teams here at this point. I'm far more used to Zoom. So, um, we'll see, as long as the clarity of what you are hearing from me is good, uh, that's what I'm interested in. I already asked Charlene about that. I'm running a new computer with Windows eleven and it, it has not been cooperative with my, um, audio. So just checking.
Yep, you sound good right now.
Okay. Very good. Then I am going to set it on mute, because I guess we got about five minutes.
Yep.
Just in here.
Hi, Seth, how you doing? Saat, you're currently muted. I'm not real familiar with Teams, but in the top right-hand corner of my screen on a menu bar, there's a mic button.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
All right, Rob, it's all about you today. I got a giant picture of you.
You're, you're the same thing on mine right now, so.
Nobody else.
I'm gonna fix that.
You and I are running this meeting, I guess.
That's scary, huh?
Yeah.
Well, not exactly.
Uh, who said that? Who said that? That sounded like
Take a look at your list.
John Ruggles.
We'll see. And you're not going to see me on camera. I'm sitting here kind of out in the shop in the dark. Uh, I had to go up and get my migraine medication, uh, prior to this.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Hello, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
We sure can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is, yeah, this is a little different than Zoom, um, so I see all of you guys on and not myself, but if you hear me, that's good enough.
Loud and clear.
Alrighty.
You know, if we don't have pictures, some of you guys could be AI bots.
That is true. That is true.
And actually, even with pictures, you could be, so.
That's true.
For adding that. I was just about to say the same thing.
And of course, the entity that would say that would be the AI bot.
Well, I think you have come up with a way that I can retire then.
There you go.
We'll just create that AI bot and substitute that.
Let you know when you retire, you don't have any free time, so.
Gee whiz, I, I haven't figured that out yet.
Hi, Loris.
Hi. Now, Jess, I've got a question for you. I see Zach signed on. Um, again, this is different than Zoom, so I see Rob, uh, John, Tiana, Saat, Zach, Loris, and Kelly, but I don't see you. Are you under Zach?
Jess is not on yet.
Oh, Jess is not on. Okay. Well, that's why I don't see him.
Right. There he is. Speak of the devil.
I've been called worst things today.
Not by me. Okay, so Jess, are you ready to go? I mean, it's, it's just very low-key this evening.
Absolutely.
All right, well, when the clock strikes four, we shall begin.
We shall. Who all, who all do we have with us? I see we have Chair Antoveros. I see we have Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Best, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Burton, um, let's see. Um, yeah, I'm sharing my screen. Is everyone seeing the, uh, the agenda?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have Mary and let's see, we don't have huh?
We don't have Mary. I'm not, I'm not seeing
And our new commissioner.
Sheila either.
And she, I don't see, I don't see Sheila either.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, I know, uh, so Shar, if you all, if commissioners, if you remember Shar Slaughter, who is our, our new, new work, although she's, she's been here, uh, it feels like she's been in the office quite a while now, um, but Shar will be your primary contact as, um, Marty will be enjoying her retirement soon. And Shar is on with us, and I know Shar reached out to, um, to the commissioner. She hadn't heard back from specifically, um, uh, Mary and, and Sheila, Commissioners Williams and Walsh, and did not, yeah, I don't believe has heard anything back from them.
Okay. Okay, well, you know, we don't have to have a quorum, Jess. It's four oh one, so let's go ahead and start the study session.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Antoveros, um, planning and zoning commissioners and guests. Appreciate you all being here this afternoon for your study session as scheduled for today, July twenty-sixth at four PM. Um, and as you all know, and we'll, and we'll, uh, preface, um, the beginning of your study session to let you know that we will not be holding a public hearing, um, Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing today at five thirty. Um, so where we do schedule your study session to go till five thirty, we're not, um, under the gun, so to speak, to be done by five thirty, but, uh, we're pretty optimistic. I think of the things we're gonna go through. Um, we could certainly be done, um, by that time. So first on your agenda for the study session is giving you an overview of cases that will be coming to you next month at your public hearing on Wednesday, August thirtieth. Uh, the first item is CUP twenty-three eighteen, conditional use permit for an RV as a permanent residence in the Valley area. And Kelly Bingham of our staff is managing this case and has some slides to show you and give you an overview of, uh, of that request. So Kelly, go ahead when you're ready, and I'll stop sharing.
Thank you. Um, real quick, before I get started, it looked like Commissioner Wilson had a question in the chat. Did you want to address that before we move on?
I did not see that. Thank you. Um,
Jess, I just wanted to make sure if it was supposed to be recorded, that it was, because sometimes I miss.
I see the message, and, and thank you, Shar. That was something Shar and I were just talking about a few minutes before we started this. Um, I see a message as yes, we do, we do record these meetings. Um, we're not required to do minutes or you approve these minutes, but we do record them, uh, in case anyone wants the recording, um, and for us to refer to. So we are. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Kelly, for catching that, and go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so this is CUP twenty-three eighteen, and it's a request for an RV as a permanent residence. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yep, we can see it.
Thank you, Chair Antoveros. Uh, our property owner is Brian and Helen Maxwell. Uh, they're located in the Valley area. They're on an AR one parcel in the agricultural residential zone, uh, so that's why they need a conditional use permit in order to have an RV as a permanent residence. You can see that the subject property is pretty close to the center of the Valley area. Uh, up in the corner, you can see that this is Highway sixty-four intersecting Highway one eighty. Um, so it's pretty close to that area. Uh, to give a brief overview of the request, the RV is going to be affixed to jack stands uh, with some paneling to hide the wheels and a patio. Uh, the applicant would haul water, dump waste at an approved dump station, and use a generator. Uh, and eventually they might switch to solar for the power, uh, and eventually they might build a dwelling, but they said that that would be at least five years out. Here's their site plan. Uh, you can see that there's a little driveway parking area with some storage, and this little rectangle labeled with an A is where the actual RV airstream would go. Staff will be looking at conformance with the zoning ordinance and the Valley area plan, uh, but does the commission have any questions on this one?
Um, Kelly, this is Chair Antoveros. Can you go back two slides, I think? Go back one more. Okay, that one. Um, I've just got kind of a practical question. It sounds like this RV is going to be pretty stationary. It's going to be affixed with jack stands, paneling, and a patio. But they're going to dump waste in an approved dump station? How does that work? I, I mean, I know, I know practically how it works, but it just seems like a lot of work to take the, the jack, uh, stands down, remove the paneling, and a patio.
Right. Um, some applicants I know will set it up so they can drive away from the patio pretty easily, but you're right, that being affixed with the jack stands, uh, it would take some effort. My guess is that they plan to use a container to transfer the waste. I'll double-check with the applicant, make sure that's updated correctly, uh, once we get to a hearing.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Um, Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Walsh, uh, have their hands raised. So Commissioner Wilson, you go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, they make a device called a tote that you can connect to your wastewater connections, dump into that, wheel it away somewhere, and then dump into, you know, an authorized dump station type facility, so they wouldn't need to move the entire So they wouldn't need to move the entire RV. They can just dump into that portable tank.
Okay, thank you. That is, that is good to know. Thank you.
And that was relating to a question that I had. When we say that we're going to dump waste in an approved waste dump station, is, are we talking about just black water? Or are we talking about gray water also?
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I believe that it is also gray water. If Mr. McNeely can remember in our conversations with environmental quality, if that's accurate. But my understanding is that they're dumping everything into one tank on the RV, and then they're hauling everything out. The intention is that they're not dumping anything on the ground without an environmental quality permit.
Right, Kelly. This is Jess McNeely with staff. We all, you know, our county encourages gray water, using gray water for various purposes on your property. It's a good idea. We all know that's considered a good way to dispose of your gray water is somewhere other than just, you know, use it for vegetation on your property or something like that. Unfortunately, the ADQ rules that we continue to work with petitioning, actually through our sustainable building program, ways to modify those rules, the ADQ rules are pretty rigid. In the only way you can have a gray, an approved permitted gray water system is if you have an approved permitted in the ground permanent wastewater system, then you can divert your gray water, but you have to have systems in place where when the temperature is too cold or for whatever other reasons that the, that the black water system, your wastewater system still could handle all of your gray water. So that's, that's one of the tough things that we would like to get worked out with ADQ eventually. Unfortunately, it's the ADQ rules. The county doesn't get to adopt their own environmental quality rules. And we're just delegated, our department's delegated to administer them. So we hope that at some point in the future, it would be easier for something really simple. Say your, gosh, your washing machine to just have a, to have a simple gray water connection to where you could make better use of your gray water. Does that answer the questions?
Hey Jess, it sort of does, but my concern is, is that RVs are uniquely situated to be able to take advantage of this since we have, as now a full year resident of an RV. There are separate gray and black water systems, so the gray water is entirely independent. And therefore, I think we're wasting a real valuable resource there, just dumping it into septic treatment systems when, as you mentioned, it could be used more productively on site. So anything that can be done by the county to encourage ADQ to get on board with that kind of a thing would certainly be beneficial for all of these folks, in addition to the fact that having to haul all that gray water is an awful lot of extra work because you generate a lot more gray water than you do black.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. And when it really comes down to it, Commissioner Wilson, we know the practical application that, that people are going to safely dispose of their gray water on their site, maybe make some good use of it on some vegetation. That just technically cannot be permitted, crazy enough. You know, if you were out doing dispersed camping in the national forests, that's probably what you do. So I'm sure in many, if not most of these cases, people will safely dispose of their gray water on their property and make some good use of it. It's just, it's just a little bit of an existential quandary that the RV is still not a permitted permanent dwelling. And it's, if it's not doing a permitted permanent black water system onsite in the ground wastewater system, then ADQ does not have a process for being able to permit the gray water. So gray water is probably being disposed of safely on the site, just not going through a permit.
Okay, thanks, Mr. McNeely. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
So are we in effect then just encouraging folks to violate ADQ rules? Are we turning in our head and ignoring a violation?
No.
Selectively enforcing things here?
No, we're not. And as you probably know, our, you know, our code enforcement is very much complaint driven. So we stay silent on the matter, but the fact of the matter is we all, we all probably have a pretty good understanding of of probably what takes place. So yeah, no, no, no active measures on our part. We are delegated to administer ADQ rules, and we do. And so if we get a complaint, then we have to enforce it otherwise. And we do actively work to try to make ADQ rules better, you know, more applicable and aligned with what, with reality at good practice.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Commissioner Walsh, please go ahead.
I was just going to say that's called a honey bucket. You dump your black tank into the honey bucket and you take it to a dump station. And I won't pontificate on gray water.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. I have learned my something new for the day. So thank you, Commissioners Wilson and Walsh, for that education. All right, let's move on to the next case, please.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Kelly has the next one as well, which is also RV as a permanent residence, CUP 2331, also generally in the Valley area. So go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. This case is CUP 2331. It is very similar to the last case that we just discussed, but I'll go ahead and get into it. The applicant for this case is Edward Vasquez. He's at 4384 East Juniper Road in the Valley area. You'll see that's a little bit more to the east of the last case that we just looked at. This is also in the AR1 zone, and he is also requesting the CUP to live in the RV permanently. And here's a vicinity map of the property. You can see this one's actually pretty close to the South Rim Ranches area. More so closer to that than the center of Valley, like the other one was. Similarly to the previous case, this RV would be affixed with jack stands. They would use paneling to hide the wheels and put in a patio. This person would also be hauling water, using a generator, and dumping waste in an approved dump station. This applicant did indicate specifically that they would use a container to transfer like the honeypot that Commissioner Walsh mentioned and Commissioner Wilson described as well. This applicant stated that they would turn the generator off by 8:00 PM to reduce any potential disruption to the neighbors. The zoning ordinance also states that the decibel should be limited to 50 decibels at the property line. So they would be held to that standard as well, just to reduce the noise. Eventually, this applicant may put in solar, and eventually, they may build a composting toilet. They would need to talk to the Building Division and Environmental Quality respectively to put those things in at a later date. And here is the site plan for this applicant. You can see they have a relatively large shed on the property. This is where the fifth wheel would go, right in the center. And they also showed the composting toilet onsite. This is something that would be farther down the road, and they would actually need to put in a full septic system if they wanted to have it separate from the fifth wheel. So that's something that they would need to decide if they want to move forward with and talk to Environmental Quality about that. And staff will be looking at the conformance with the zoning ordinance and the Valley area plan. Does the commission have any questions on this one?
Ms. Bingham, I don't think we do. Commissioner Walsh, I'm thinking your hand is raised from the last case, right? Okay, so it's back up. I'm thinking it was for the last case.
You're right. I don't know how to lower. Is it lowered now?
Yes, it is. But you're ahead of me, Commissioner Walsh, because I don't even know how to raise it. So Ms. Bingham, we are good to go to the next case.
Thank you, Chair Antoveros.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next case, CUP 2335. It's essentially renewal of a, of an old conditional use permit for a cell tower that the applicant, I'm assuming inadvertently, but their, their CUP did completely expire. So they have to come back to public hearing. Zach is managing this case, so go ahead, Zach.
Okay, thanks, Jess. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is case CUP 23035. It's a wireless telecommunications tower. Pinnacle Consulting is the applicant. And before we jump into things, Jess briefly described it, but this tower was approved by the commission in 2018. I think I actually handled the case at the time. Construction started on the tower in 2019 and ended in early 2020. Their conditional use permit actually expired for this tower on May 30th. The zoning ordinance at the time actually had a maximum amount of time that a wireless telecommunications facility could be approved for, and that was five years. My understanding is that yes, inadvertently, the applicant allowed the permit to expire. The applicant did apply for a renewal on July 30th. Technically, it's a brand new conditional use permit application because it did expire. Here's a vicinity map, and this dotted line here is the city of Williams Boundary. Taking I-40 west about seven miles, we reach the subject property. It's on the north of I-40. And McLoughlin Reservoir is on that property. This is a general zone property. The applicant has a site plan, but this aerial actually, I think, just shows the picture a little bit better. It doesn't actually show up on the aerial yet, the tower, but it's in this yellow area at the corner of this property. And here's the reservoir as well, I-40, kind of right at the bottom here, the westbound lane of the subject property. So this tower is 105 foot tall monopine, and you can see that the way that they put the branches on here is really thick. You'll see in the next slide here that it actually does a really good job of camouflaging it. So I've passed by this tower a number of times, and at least a few times, I just haven't been able to pick it out while driving just because you're going so fast on it. This, these pictures that I pulled here are from Google Street View. So westbound I-40, before we reach the subject property, here's the tower here. And then on the middle, this is directly south of it. You would not be able to take a picture or barely even see it at this point at all just because the other trees that are sort of in the way here, even though it, as far as topography goes, it's at a higher elevation there. And it's taller than a lot of the trees in the area. This third Google Street View image is from just south of the actual reservoir here. So if you're where this RV is, you're not seeing it at all, and you can only see it for a really brief window of time as you're approaching and as you're, you're leaving sort of the property. So staff considerations for this case, the tower was constructed as approved by the commission. Even though technically, you know, it's a brand new CUP request, generally, staff is going to be able to make the findings of fact in the same way that they were made in 2018. All the previous conditions of approval appear to be met, and I will go out and verify that they have been. If so, staff is likely to recommend approval without an expiration date, as is allowed by the zoning ordinance now and as we commonly do for these sorts of cases. But with that, I'm happy to take any questions, comments, or concerns, or things to research while I go through the analysis here.
Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead.
Yeah. Hey, Zach, I remember when you went out there for the previous, for the initial CUP. I went with you. That was a while ago. It seems more like five months and five years or so. I am going to ask you to let me know when you go out again. I'd like to see how things developed after the approval. So just, just a quick check, nothing, nothing big. I'll just let you know with an email tomorrow. So.
Sounds good. Yeah, you're right. Time flies too. It feels like yesterday.
All right. I don't see any other hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and go to number four, if it's going to be coming up for hearing next month.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. And item number four, sub 2247. This would be a request to amend the preliminary plat requirements for Ranch at the Peaks. Those would include improvements to Roundtree Road and requirement for trail. Bob is managing this case and can answer any questions if anyone has any. Really, we put this on your study session in case it's ready to go to public hearing next month. Back to you. We would like, if it is going back to public hearing, we'd like to go ahead and get it out of the way and help this applicant, this customer, move things along. But we have a meeting scheduled with the applicant and other county staff, public works included. And I believe next week. So this may come to you next month, may not, but the request is pretty simple to remove requirements for improving Roundtree Road, which is a Forest Service road, and remove requirement for a trail that, that the community members don't, no longer want. Any questions on item number four?
Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead.
I have to apologize. I somehow missed lowering my hand. I have no questions on this. Thank you.
Oh, no worries. No worries. I am not judging. Commissioner Bass, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first direct question is, are we speaking to any neighborhood group about this? Do they have some representation in the conversation?
So, Commissioner Bass, that's a great question. The, the neighborhood has been, as you probably know, this, this issue has been around for months. The neighborhood has given a lot of input. Right now, it's just a matter of determining from the staff level what is possible. What is, what is legal and what is possible? And then from the app, from the applicant, the property owner, which way they want to go ahead. This will go back to, it has to go back to public hearing if, if it's going to move forward for, for what the applicant would like to achieve and what they need to achieve. And so then it will be back to public hearing and the neighbors will be notified.
Okay, we've been around this barn several times. Well, the first time, I think it was most of 20 years ago, when I had just gotten onto P&amp;Z Commission. So I feel a little twinge of guilt about not having resolved this correctly at the time. And then we saw it, what, a year or two ago, a year ago. Apparently, we can't resolve the Roundtree Road issue, but one of the issues that the neighbors have along Roundtree Road is dust. And if we could do anything that would mitigate that, that would be great. And one thing would be a fence along there. Since the applicant is not being required to improve the road, there should be a pot of money they could maybe put up a fence. And another thing would be road maintenance. And I assume that that is the obligation of the Forest Service. But if we could get creative and get a little, you know, spray some lignin on there or something to mitigate dust through some sort of a program, I would certainly hope we could get a little bit creative and help these folks out, since they did buy these properties under the understanding that that road would be paved. And I guess from there, we'll just have to see what comes up in the hearing. But I hope we reach out to whatever neighborhood group there may be and make sure they are part of the conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveros, and I know that at this hearing, we can simply ask questions. We cannot discuss the case. But I do know where Roundtree Road is, and I'm trying to envision where a fence would, as suggested by Commissioner Best, where it would go. Because it because it's very, it's very rural out there, wildlife, you know, so on and so forth. So I think I think going what you said, we're going to figure out what we can legally do and see what the options are. I'm I'm curious to see on what comes back, and I I wonder if the neighbors would would even want a fence. I'm not sure what kind of fence Commissioner Best is talking about, but it sounded like it might be like a a dust mitigation. And I don't know that that would be something that the neighbors would be interested in, but I know that we cannot discuss the case. I'm just throwing thoughts out there that came to mind as I was listening to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Wilson, your hand is raised.
And further consideration, since we can't discuss the case, I will retract my thought here because it was too detailed for today.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Not seeing any other hands raised. Let's go ahead and jump to the Community Development Department update.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And the next several items are all long-range planning items that that Melissa manages. First one is your monthly reminder about the Route sixty-six Brownfield Grant. And I know Melissa's with us, and she just wanted to give you a reminder on on this on this deadline going into next month. And and maybe update on on where we see this thing going in the future. Go ahead, Melissa.
Hi, thanks. Good evening, Commissioners. Right, just to remind you, we still have a little bit of funding available for property owners that may want to have environmental assessments done on their property. Again, this grant is being managed through NACOG. Kokona County is part of a five-member coalition. The initial grant award was six hundred thousand dollars. We've spent it down almost to zero. So there are four properties in the county that's benefited benefited from this. There's consideration for a new grant application. That cycle will be coming up soon. The new grant actually may have more, if if it's applied for, the new grant would actually have additional options for site reuse planning. So that could be quite exciting, and just to wanted to keep reminding you that that there are still potentially some funds. The last time, the last month to apply for those would be in August. And remember, the grant application goes through NACOG. But if you have any questions or anybody has any questions, please contact me and I'll help out. Yeah. I'll just go on to the next one, Jess. Yeah, and and so the next update for you is about the Flagstaff Regional Plan. And if you have not been able to attend any of the workshops, we will make sure that you're getting invitations to the ones that will be coming up in the late summer and in the fall. And that will be important for you to pay attention to, because those are actually when the scenario the scenarios are chosen. So we've been through the visioning process. We've been through a lot of outreach with public, public outreach and workshops. And then there was the Face the Future Flagstaff, which I think several of you were able to attend. Actually putting ideas on a map about future growth in the region. The the scenario choosing is bringing all of that information together and narrowing it down to different options. And remember why that's so important is because the final scenario chosen will eventually become the future land use map for the Flagstaff Region. So again, those workshops will be coming up late summer into the fall, and we'll keep you posted on that. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the Flagstaff Regional Plan update.
All right, Ms. Shaw, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I think you're, let's go ahead and bump to number three, because I know that's yours too.
It is. Thank you, Chair Antiveros. Item number three is about the county's comprehensive plan. So yes, we are working on these two major plan initiatives. The regional plan is a couple of years ahead of us, but we have started the comprehensive plan update as well. And we've been giving you the monthly updates. Tonight, what we would like to do is to basically get your thoughts on focus group questions, but also not just the questions themselves, but to get your perspective on where we want to, what we're trying to glean from these these focus groups. So I'm going to share my screen and talk a bit about what these focus groups are intended to achieve and what we're hoping to get from them. So hold on one second. Can you see the presentation mode?
We're we're not seeing it in presentation mode.
Okay, how's that?
Good.
All right, great. So I think we have been giving you monthly updates about the comprehensive plan. And we have been getting organized, essentially, and we had the public participation plan was approved by the board in May, and we've been working with the core planning team, which is basically county staff, on pulling together the background data and information. And we're we're in phase one, which is essentially the the background, pulling together the all the data for the plan itself. Part of this, though, will be to start reaching out to the communities, and what we are, will be doing is conducting focus groups across the county. So tonight, that's what we want to go over with you. And as a bit of background to this, then these focus groups will be conducted throughout the county. We are organizing them by the five different districts. But we anticipate having focus groups, several focus groups within each supervisory district. And the goal is to really connect, do a deep dive with communities across the county. We'll be introducing the comprehensive plan to to invited participants. And we'll be holding these in a setting that really fosters kind of an intimate and small group environment, so early engagement. And it will really be our initial take on visioning. And we will then confirm what we learn from the focus groups with open houses and workshops throughout the county. So the participants will be invited, community leaders, residents, and stakeholders who are familiar with the community, the communities around the county, and who understand issues and opportunities related to the comprehensive plan. So we've gotten a number of recommendations from the supervisors for in focus group participants, and then also participants who are known by staff. So between the supervisors and people that we work with all the time, excuse me. We will have a list of people that we will invite to these focus groups. So we, these will be about two hours each. And there's just a list of what we intend the the agenda to be. There'll be an introduction. There'll be some ground rules for the focus groups. There'll be a standard overview of the county's comprehensive plan. And what we're calling CARs, Community Assessment Reports. So we are actually creating kind of snapshot reports of communities all around the county. What we know about them today, these are about ten pages each. It has data as far, at least current data about what we know from the census, from area plans, just as much information as we can in a very succinct presentation. So when we go out to communities, we'll be able to say, this is what we know about you. Help give us more information and fill in some of the blanks. But the bulk of the focus group will be actually these engaged discussions, and we're going to talk about that with you and run the questions by you and get your input on them tonight as really basically our first test. There'll also be an evaluation point to the focus group. So you may be wondering, again, what will we do with this with this information? These inputs will form the initial visioning and issue identification that we will then confirm with workshops and open houses. So this is kind of a background as to what we're doing with the focus groups. Commissioner Best, I see your hand up.
I think maybe you just answered my question. Sounds like this gets us started through the people who are invited, and then there are public open houses after that. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
And just to give a visual reminder of the county and the communities within it. And, you know, the, this map is, I'm sure, small on your screen, but up north, starting at Greenhaven, we go all the way down through Lee's Ferry, Marble Canyon, Vermillion Cliffs, Cliff Cliff Dwellers. We'll jump over to the Jacob Lake area, and there's White Sage over just near Fredonia, and then come on down. We'll go down to the the valley area, Red Lake, Parks. Over on the west, we've got Cape Babastay's West, and then, you know, we'll go all the way down to Forest Lake. So the county, as we know, is as large. You all see this every month with your different with your different cases, but this will form the basically our direction for outreach for this planning process. So just a visual reminder of where we will be going. And we do want to try to conclude these before, during, through, in the early fall so that we can actually get out to communities and meet with people there before any kind of weather starts to limit our ability, ability to travel. So we are going to be offering these both in person and then virtual, depending on the how convenient it is for the different communities. And just a couple of other updates before we jump into the actual questions with you. Our website that is specific to the comprehensive plan is now live. And we sent a newsletter out. I believe some of you are on that newsletter list. We've got currently ninety-seven contacts on our mailing list. So if you haven't signed up, then I will get you all the the signup information. So the, yeah, the newsletter was sent out last week. And then we have been conducting what we call an intercept survey. It's a very short, very quick, three-minute survey, five questions. We've been using that to engage people at different events. So so far, we have seventy-eight responses. This is also posted on our InVision twenty-four-five website. To just give you an idea of some of the events we've been attending, we've gone to Earth Day, the First Friday Art Walks, a couple of the Veterans Stand Down events. The last one was out at Twin Arrows Casino. We've been to Juneteenth, Diversity Day, and we are looking at the county fair as kind of our main kickoff date in addition to getting the focus group discussions going. So, yeah, maybe if we finish in good time, I can take you, give you a quick tour of our webpage, our website, rather, which is separate from the county's website, so it had an individual look and branding. And from that, then, we can jump into actually the questions that we have. So that's a background for you to the focus groups. And then this is actually when we are going, these are the questions that we have put together along with the core planning team to go out into the community and ask during these focus groups. So this is as we drafted them now. So we would like you to both think about the questions and give us your responses. Number one and number two, give us feedback on the questions themselves. So the first question, and there are seven of them, and we'll be taking notes, are about community shared values. So you know, in the comprehensive plan, it relies on shared values that help to form the basis for the plan. And just to kind of set the stage for thinking about the question, community values are important shared beliefs that determine the actions and influence decision-making. They reflect a common understanding of what we value. Some examples are inclusiveness and diversity in decision-making, protecting the rural lifestyle in the county, protecting the natural environment and natural beauty, supporting strong social connections and resiliency, and providing a wide range of employment. So these are just some examples of community values. And during these focus groups, we would be asking different community members to name three shared community values that are important to maintaining a high quality of life in the county. So I'm just going to leave it open for your thoughts on this. And then I may actually want to call on you individually if we don't get any responses. Are there any takers? Three community values that are important to maintaining a high quality of life in the county.
Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised. Why don't you go ahead and start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I didn't actually see this until half an hour before this meeting.
It's okay.
But one of the things that, the thing that I most like about the comprehensive plan is the quote by Aldo Leopold. Because it is quite unique, and I doubt that any other county plan starts with that quote. And it basically says that the land is part of the community. And that, to me, is the value that I hold most dear. I could break that up three ways, but what I feel is that we all get up in the morning and put our shoes on and go to work, and we're going to take care of transportation, community development, you know, water, energy, those things happen. But we really have to think about the land being part of the community and valued as such. That's not something that happens as naturally as the sort of economic development that happens around us. And so that is my one value, and I guess it's encapsulated in the values, in the in the comprehensive plan is natural environment, probably water, resources, land use and growth, open space. But in all of that, and in every decision we make, thinking of the land as part of the community, not not some other, not something that, you know, a secondary value, but just as important as any other value. And I know I didn't come up with three things there. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for that.
And I think we should really push that quote. We could maybe pull a few quotes out of the quote. Because I think it really does make us unique. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Walsh?
Thank you. As far as shared values, I really like preserving our rural lifestyle. It's important to me that it's not taken for granted. The second one is our natural environment, including compatible landscaping within our natural environment. And the third one is making a minimal impact on our resources. So I really appreciate dark skies. I really appreciate preservation of water and protecting our water. And I appreciate reducing the risks of wildfire.
Thank you, Commissioner Walsh. Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised. Do you, do you have other comments or thoughts? No? Okay. All right. Does anyone else want to give feedback to Melissa? I will say that sod is actually ahead of me. Melissa, I was not able to look at your email. I got it yesterday. I think it was after five yesterday. And I have my grandkids all day. In fact, And I have my grandkids all day. In fact, they just left. If you heard any, any noise going on, that's what was happening. But I honestly have not had time to look at it in a thoughtful manner. So I, I'm not going to say anything this evening. Now, Commissioner Ruggles, I see you unmuted. Would you like to say anything?
Well, I haven't got a lot to add at this point, because one simple thing. Commissioner Walsh stated a lot of what we debated during the Dona Park Area Plan update. And the second thing is, I participated in the last update to the comprehensive plan. So I am more interested in what everyone else has to say at this point for those, that reason particularly. So thank you for asking, and I'm going to unmute.
Okay. Okay. Melissa, I'm not seeing any other hands raised or anyone unmuted at this point. So I think you can go ahead and move forward in your presentation.
Okay. Well, the next question, then, has to do with a vision for the future. And, you know, again, these responses can be pretty spontaneous. And I think a lot of people may want to think about these hard. But, but honestly, in a focus group setting, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is often the most important response that somebody can give. So, you know, just to, to share that, you know, if there is something that comes, comes to mind, don't think that, because there, there hasn't been a lot of time for consideration, that it isn't important, because it often is actually one of the most important. If you reflect back, it will actually, you'll come back to the initial thought. So just to kind of, you know, prompt you to not, not think too much about this. But in terms of a vision for the future, you know, really thinking about what is a vision? A vision is where a community wants to be in the future. Where are you now and where do we want to be in twenty years? What do we value? What inspires us? And how do we describe it? So just in a few words, I mean, this is not a question where we're asking for a completely wordsmith vision statement, but just some short snips about what would your ideas about the vision for the future of the county look like? Where do you want the county to be in twenty years?
Commissioner Best? Commissioner Best, you're muted.
Okay, so blurring out what, what just comes out when you ask that, because I haven't thought about this. Let me say, first of all, tell us about your vision for the future of your community. My community is Flagstaff. I live in suburban Flagstaff. And I am just realizing that I think we've lost the battle. Because what I'm seeing, and I had a friend in town over the weekend, and she said, this place is totally different. And we're driving around. I actually got pulled over by a police officer for weaving, because I was looking out the window, pointing at things, and we were talking. But she was pointing out the vision, the vision of the things in town, they're changing so fast that the town is losing its character. And basically, what's happening is that it is being built out sixty feet tall on the sidewalk, which is completely different than what we all think of when we think of Flagstaff. So that's my particular, the, the first question, A. For instance, the building going up at the corner of Butler and Beaver. You know, eight feet above the sidewalk, there's a little roof sticking out that is two feet from the sidewalk, which, if you project thirty years ahead, and that goes down Butler, Butler looks like Brooklyn. That's not how we envision Flagstaff, not the, not the sight view that we want to see. We lose the peaks, we lose the greenery, there's not enough land, room for landscaping, and so it becomes a built environment. Question B. Vision for the future of the county, I would like to see the natural world. When I drive through the county, I want to see the land as part of the community visually. I want to see the peaks. I want to see the trees. I want to see the green landscapes. That's what we're losing within the city of Flagstaff. You know, it's different in the county. But we still have challenges before us. I think we're doing a good job. We were really hard at it. You know, I, I think back to the the work we did for the utility scale renewable energy ordinance, trying to balance development with vision from different places. But my, my answer to question B is, I want to see the natural world. I don't want it blocked by human endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. I think, as I was listening to Commissioner Best, he, he makes the point in that the county is, is pretty vast. And so his response was, was pretty Flagstaff-centric, if you will. And when I'm thinking about, like, District Three, you know, where, where I'm at, you're going to be getting a lot of, Melissa, this is maybe a question for you, because the question is for what is envisioned for each of those communities? So, so would that be, if I could substitute a word, would this question, to me, be a vision as an overt image of what a community, and I'm just going to insert Red Lake in there, aspires to be now and in the future? What do you value? What inspires you? How do you describe it? Are you looking for, for those kind of answers that are more specific to, you know, to places that we, I guess you would say, represent? Or overall for the county? Or both?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And, and actually, when we go out to the communities, we'll be inviting the participants to talk about both. Because, you know, we want to learn about individual communities. These are not area plan updates that we're, that we're going to suggest. But these are ways to engage with communities that we haven't normally engaged with. So it's, you know, another purpose of these is to go and meet people where they are, get them to, you know, hopefully get them excited and involved in the comprehensive plan update. So we want to hear about the individual communities. We also want to understand what they think about the county as a whole. So it really is two, both questions tonight. For you, I took out that, that first question about your individual communities. And just in the interest of time, and then also because the commission, you all are very familiar with the comprehensive plan, and just wanted to just streamline it a bit and ask specifically about the vision, the future of the county. So, yeah, the, the, the questions I sent you asked both, the question both ways.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And I know that I missed this, but I just want some clarification, because there's going to be the focus groups, okay? And that's going to be in all five districts. Those focus groups are going to consist of invitees through staff or through Board of Supervisor references, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So can you, again, I apologize, but I did have my grandkids here. I'm trying to chew gum and talk at the same time when that was going on. So you have the focus groups in each of these five districts. What, what is going to be the difference of the focus group in the five districts as compared to the open house in the five districts? Because you're going to be getting all of these, all of these communities within the five districts, right?
Correct, that's right.
Okay. And you're going to have focus groups in each of the districts before you have the, you know, the community outreach. Can you just refresh my memory that the purpose for the focus group prior to the open houses is what?
The, the purpose of the focus group is to, and let me back up a bit. We have many communities in the county. We will be going out to each district. We, we will probably not have a focus group each in Marble Canyon, Vermillion Cliffs, Cliff Cliff Dwellers. There'll be one focus group for those communities, just to try to consolidate them a bit. But then, once we do gather all of the focus group responses, we will put them together and start to look for the themes and the trends that come out, so that we then will understand countywide what are the, the visions? What's the overall vision that across the county, our different participants have identified? As well as, we'll talk about the needs and the issues. And then we'll go back and we'll have more generalized open houses and workshops, where we won't have as many, but we will be offering open houses, that, that type of format, to invite anyone who wanted to attend to then review the results of the focus groups and help confirm those. So this is a way to do a deep dive with small groups, five to ten people, to, you know, people that really know their communities and understand how different things are affecting them. But it, you know, it's just, it's a way for us to do this type of outreach in the county as large as it is, and get as much feedback as we can. But then there will be opportunities, both virtually and in person, to have the rest of the community get involved. So there'll be more, there'll be a lot of travel, a lot of, a lot of workshops, yeah.
Yeah, because I was just thinking about District Three, and just the diversity within that district itself. You've got, well, you know, we've got, you know, Chita Village, Mountaineer, the Red Lake area, Oak Creek Canyon. So I'm sure that there's going to be, like, just looking at the diversity within one district, just District Three, is pretty, pretty big. So I'm sure this is going to be, yeah, you, you already, I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know. I, I'm just connecting all the dots in my mind right now. And so thank you, you have helped me do that. So that's my last question.
And any other ideas about a vision for the future of the comprehensive plan? And if you recall, and I didn't put it up here, but the comprehensive plan, the vision statement has basically four parts to it. And several of our newer area plans have followed that same format. So the natural environment is one, community character is another, land use is another. So there, but that's not something that we wanted to necessarily lead with and provide another structure. This is more of thinking about a vision for the future for the county as a whole. If there are any ideas or thoughts that come to mind.
Well, Melissa, I, I will just tell you that I look at this, I look at the growth that is going on, and I just wonder to myself, where is the water going to come from? That, that's just a question that I'm throwing out. If that question fits into any of the questions that you've posed, that is something that, and I, and I know that others are concerned about that. I have, I have people asking me, where are we going to get the water for all of this growth? Is there, is there anything in what we're doing that's going to be addressing that?
If you recall, the current plan, water resources is a separate element in the plan. And in fact, that's required to be an element by Arizona revised statute. So it's something that we need to address as far as demand and supply. We, yeah.
Okay. I, I just see all of the growth, and I just, I'm just thinking, wow, this, this place is really exploding. If you drive down I forty west and you see what's happening in Belmont and even in the Red Lake area, it's, it's, it's an issue.
If you, just a quick question on that, then. If you turn that around in terms of a vision for the future in twenty years, what would that look like? The water resources and water use in the county in response to development?
Well, as you know, that we cannot consider water use when we make our decisions. So when these developments do start coming in, I, I'm, you know, at what point, who, who can start considering that? You know, I'm not sure that I've really answered your, answered your question there. I may have probably muddied the waters on that. But we have limited resources in Coconino County. And because of those limited resources, it seems that, you know, they can only be stretched so far. And, you know, what is the breaking point to that? And if we were just to keep it at water, I mean, just, just that, you know, where, where is that breaking point where you say, we, now, we're, we're packed out? Our, our, this resource is, it's done?
Would that translate into something along the lines of water resources are protected and in line with protecting the supply and linking the supply to the demand? That's not worded quite right, but I'm just thinking in terms of turning it into actual vision statement.
Well, I certainly, now, this is just me, but I certainly am on board for protecting on our water resources, for preserving them to the greatest degree possible. But every time somebody new moves into the county, they're going to need water. And so what was, what did you say about the demand versus the resource? What was your, what was your statement there, Melissa?
And, and it has to do with what the revised statutes actually ask us to analyze in the plan. And that is where we, we need to take a look at what the demand is, what the water demand is, and then look at the supply that's available.
Well, I, I think that would be very prudent. Like, I, I think that that would be a very, very prudent thing to do. Because that's the one thing that people must have, and that's water.
And, yeah, that's, our data is somewhat limited. We're, we're looking into that right now to understand how much information we actually have. But that will be a major part of this update.
Okay. I do see Commissioner Vice Chair Burton's hand raised. And you go ahead and go first, Vice Chair Burton, and then Commissioner Best. You go ahead and follow her.
Um, I was thinking, as you guys were talking about the water issue, and for me, it's, like, if I were to envision something, it's adapting more and more technology that helps us reduce our consumption of precious, precious resources. For example, you know, with water use, devices that add aeration to your water, so it reduces the amount of flow that comes out, but you don't feel like it does. You know, things that help just overall low-flow toilet kind of stuff. You know, things that are included with actual building process that could be incorporated into a desired practice across the county for what we encourage people, or if, if legally require people to do in order to help reduce every development's usage amount without it really negatively impacting them. If that makes sense?
Thank you.
That was, that was all I had.
Commissioner Best, you're muted. Um, Commissioner Best, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
Thank you, uh, actually, to follow along on Commissioner Burton's comments, we were just talking about gray water and requiring that would be an interesting idea. I don't quite know where this fits into this whole page, these seven items. Uh, City Flagstaff has a carbon neutrality goal of 2030. And, uh, boy, that's been an interesting, uh, issue vis a vis the hospital for the last three or four months. The City Planning and Zoning Commission turned down the hospital, a billion-dollar project, largely on sustainability grounds that they had not addressed, the carbon neutrality plan. And then City Council passed it, and now they're, now the citizens through initiative and petition drive have put it on the ballot. So, uh, that's been an interesting issue to watch. And as far as I know, we don't really address that very much. Um, so there's something to think about, and honestly, I haven't had enough time to just kind of put it in a few words and plug it in here. Um, related to that, so, so, I'm going around circles, and so I apologize. Related to water, the state has uh, different areas that are managed in different ways, and probably you know a lot more about this than I do. But we are not an active management area, which means that there's not really much water planning going on, um, especially groundwater. And that, that's my understanding. So it may be that one thing that we will want to do regarding water is become part of the state system in a way that we're not now. And I don't know enough about it to define it. But having more control over who's taking what water where, and having actual long-term planning, uh, so that instead of saying, we can't say the word water at planning and zoning meetings, water would be part of the conversation, and it would be part of a plan. Regarding, uh, whether we want to get involved in carbon neutrality, which we are, because we are citizens who are part of, uh, a system that the national government through the, uh, interestingly named, uh, Inflation Reduction Act has, has put out billions upon billions of dollars to electrify, uh, to go to heat pumps, to put solar on houses. And that's, uh, happening. I'm personally involved in my own house doing it. There's a lot of money behind it. The automobile industry is definitely behind electrifying vehicles. And so I'm wondering, uh, resources-wise, where are we with electricity? And do we get involved in that? How, how do we get involved in that? Cars need charging stations. If suddenly most new houses and many retrofitted houses are electrified, which is a personal goal of mine, uh, where's that electricity come from, a- a- and? You know, are there, uh, is there capacity to move electricity around? And I don't know who answers that question. Obviously, the utility would be part of the conversation, but, uh, it, uh, again, uh, haven't had much time to think this through, but should the county be asking that question? Where are we with electrical capacity, just as where are we with water capacity? And I'll leave it there, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Best. Um, Melissa, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so.
Okay, we'll continue on, and we can do a time check. It is five twelve. Uh, we have a few more questions to get through, so again, just think, what comes to mind, you know, off the top of your head with these questions, and then we'll, we'll try to stay on time, so we're done by five thirty. The next question are about community and county needs. And so think about needs as being things we can't do without. You all have just talked about water. But within each community, I, there are conversations among community members that focus on daily and long-term social, economic, environmental, climate change-related, or other community needs. Some examples of community needs would be community and social connections, food security, forest fire protection, caring for emergencies, broadband communication, roads, water jobs, housing, a long list here. Um, so, just thinking, and this is a two-part question, but we can just kind of streamline this and think about what are some of the long-term needs for the county? And, you know, you can, again, maybe pick your top one or two, and I'll take some notes.
All right, um, Commissioner Best, you are number one. Uh, I like teams because it shows me what order the hands were raised in. And Commissioner Ruggles, you're next, and then Vice Chair Burton, you follow it up.
Apparently I'm gaming the, the system because I never took my hand down. Sorry about that. I have a reputation.
I, I know, but I never, your hand was still raised and you're still.
You, you know I love to talk. Um, so, um, I, I would say, um, there was, there was a meeting of, a joint meeting of council and supervisors with their forest experts, Jay Smith and Neil Chapman at the city. And the message was that if the Rio de flag watershed burns, the way, the east side of the mountain, and the east side of the mountains all burnt, nothing left. If the southwest side of the mountain, which is the Rio de flag watershed burns, the flood damage is, is in the billions with a B. Which to me sounds like Flagstaff's pretty much out of business for many years. And so this has become known by everybody. It's been reported in the paper. Uh, to me, it's job one. I don't see lines of trucks with uh, timber logs rolling down one eighty. I don't know how much thinning's being done. But I think that, um, it's simply job one. The level of disaster that major forest fires can cause, uh, we've seen it. We don't need any more lessons. We've seen it in Canada, we're seeing it in Europe, we see it in California. So my question is, what is our plan? Uh, does, does county have a plan and how are we involved? We have the Four Forests Restoration Initiative, which, um, in my opinion, has not been executed competently and fast enough. It's been on the books now for, uh, twelve years, since two thousand and eleven. And still the Rio de flag watershed is not thinned. How can that be, knowing the danger that we're in? So that, that to me is, uh, need one. Uh, I know there are lots of places in the county that have other environments than Ponderous Pine Forest. And, uh, but I think the bulk of the county lives in areas that do have forests, and getting those forests thinned. So we're not spending, you know, you, you can spend forty million on thinning or two hundred million on mitigation for the flooding. So that to me is job one. Thanks. And I am gonna lower my hand.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, let's see, John? I mean, thank you, Commissioner Best, Commissioner Ruggles, you're up.
Yes, I, I am here. I'm gonna try to make this just as simple as I can, uh, yeah, in agreement with what I stated earlier. Uh, Melissa did mention one thing that has gotten my attention over the years. Broadband access, I think about the people that I meet when I get out on site visits, uh, other areas of the county that I'm out in regularly, when I help people with one thing or the other that I know. Two words to add to that, rural and affordable. Because that is, that is lacking. When you have people that can't access their social security, uh, accounts, their bank accounts, they have to go to the library in Ash Fork or Parks, uh, or find some other way to access things. Uh, this is lacking, um, I think, tension, uh, at a number of levels. But, uh, I think we should simply state that rural and affordable broadband access is something that it's going to be almost impossible for the people to deal with these things in the future. It, it's, uh, not affordable for many people. We heard a little bit about this with the Ash Fork, cell tower, uh, and saying how, well, there aren't gonna be any more cell towers, it'll all be satellite. Well, if you take, I did a cost comparison prior to looking at that. It's gonna cost you about a hundred and twenty dollars to get Starlink. Uh, if you can get, uh, stationary wifi, uh, like, uh, T-Mobile offers, you can get that down to about fifty dollars. Well, there are people who have difficulty even affording a fifty-dollar park. And, uh, the feds are looking at it, uh, from the standpoint of, well, well, states aren't utilizing the money that we have allocated to, uh, help with this, and it may go away. At least it should be addressed that it is a very important need for the future, especially in rural areas of not just our county, but across especially the Western US and some parts of the Midwest as well. Anyway, that's enough, so thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Vice Chair Burton?
Yeah, um, completely agree with, with, uh, both Commissioner Best and Commissioner Ruggles. And yeah, that, uh, that Starlink doesn't even include the six, seven hundred dollar upfront cost for the equipment. So, um, yeah, there's a lot of hurdles with that. And I think, I, I do agree that the fire protection probably should be the number one, but another thing that comes to mind for me is public transportation in rural areas. You know, uh, even as simple as Cachina, Mountaineer, there's no regular bus service out here. We, you know, we're only a couple miles out of town, but you have to pay a pretty penny for a ride share program. Um, you know, I think that these communities that are like closer to some of the big towns, I feel like we need to have something available for people that can't necessarily afford to drive their car on a regular basis. Um, for whatever reason, maintenance costs, fuel, everything has just gone up so drastically that I think it's kind of ridiculous that a community such as like Cachina, Mountaineer, don't have just a park and ride and regular bus service that runs back and forth. You know, I know there's people out here that have no car, and I just scratch my head because I'm like, how, how do you function? Because there isn't public transportation. So, you know, I see it on the social media sites, can anyone give me a ride today? That, that to me is a safety issue. I mean, you're stuck. You can't get out. Uh, you can't go get your groceries without having to rely, rely on others. So I think things like public transportation in areas, and you know the people that live in the rural areas, they're the ones that most of the time, they can't afford a lot. So they chose the rural area because the cost of living for upfront, the cost of the house or whatever, is significantly less than the cost in town. So you're gonna look where you can afford to buy, rent, whatever, and so you're already managing tight finances. So having to include transportation costs in there in the form of personal vehicles can be a stretch for people. So I think we need some more sustainable options for community transportation. That's, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton. All right, Melissa, I'm not seeing hands raised. Um, so go ahead and go to your next point.
Okay, great. I'll do a quick time check. It's five twenty-two. Um, we have, um, basically four more questions. The last two are pretty simple. So this next question, and just to kind of, I'll maybe just jump ahead and show you the next question. So if you feel like you want to answer them simultaneously, that's fine. The next question is more about an issue. So needs are things we can't do without, an issue is an important topic or a problem that's impacting our community. So issues related to, um, transportation, housing, energy, sustainability, or health that we want to discuss and address in the comprehensive plan. So, um, an issue, um, a need is, you know, more specific than an issue, but, um, a need is something certainly that we would like your input on across the county, um, to be addressed. And then just to kind of give you a, um, jump ahead to think about, uh, the next, the, the next real deep dive question was about trends for the future. And what trends for the future, we should think about addressing in the comprehensive plan. So this question is more specific to issues, and then the next question is about trends for the future. And trends for the future are things like electric vehicles, electric bicycles, things like that, that are current things that are evolving, that are new, that haven't been addressed in the current plan. So, yeah, any thoughts on, and think about the broader county in this case, um, primary issues and impacts that should be addressed in the comprehensive plan?
Melissa, I'm sitting here looking at this list, uh, second, second sentence, think about issues and their impacts related. We, we've already almost hit on all these land use, transportation, on energy, water. On, we've already hit on those, on those topics. You know, the one that we haven't hit on is, you know, the housing. On, that's the million-dollar question. And I, I was just, as I was listening to Commissioner Best talking about the, the, uh, development that's going in on Beaver and Butler, on, I have no idea what the cost of that is gonna be. On, but that's what, when, when housing starts coming in, the more people that come in, the more housing that's gonna be needed. And that's really how things are gonna start looking. I mean, I'm not suggesting that it's gonna start looking like what's going on on the corner of Beaver and Butler, that that's how it's gonna look countywide. On, but there is a, there is a balance between housing and, you know, sustainability and land use and growth and water and energy. So I'm thinking a lot of these subjects have been, already been hit on. Uh, Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised again.
Thank you. Um, two wildly different things. Um, again, just, uh, thinking off the top of my head, the checkerboard issue, um, do we? And it's just a question in my head. I don't have an answer, and I don't even know what the question is. Uh, I guess the question is, does the state have any long-term plan? Do we have any long-term plan to resolve? Interesting questions about checkerboard land ownership. You know, state land is really private land. It can be sold off at any time. And it's just something that I wonder, are we thinking about? Are we in communication with the state about it? I, I remember, what, two, three years ago, there was a thing where the HOPEs were owed something or other, I think. And suddenly the state was gonna sell off a whole bunch of open space in the Flagstaff area. And people raised quite a stink and stopped it. But I think that's an issue that we might want to think more about. Following up on Madam Chair's conversation about workforce housing. And I know I've brought this up before. We mentioned workforce housing, but we don't define it in a lot of our documents, or let me say that we don't define it to my satisfaction. To me, workforce housing is housing that is available to people who make the median income and does not cost more than thirty percent of their income. And it's permanent. Workforce housing is not a cheap little apartment that can be picked up and used as a vacation rental or a second home from somebody, for somebody from Phoenix. It's something that is dedicated, dedicated to workforce housing. And we all know how important it is. County staff knows how important it is because we can't hire county staff because they can't afford to live here. And that's, you know, we've heard about that at the hospital, you know, teachers living in cars all across the county. It's a problem. And I think the first thing to do is define what we mean by it. And, and I believe in the past, we have had people who, who would have created permanent workforce housing if we had a format to do it. The city has a format to do it, and I would encourage us to partner with the city and perhaps other municipalities to create agencies that promote workforce housing. So I'll stop there. Thanks very much.
Okay, um, Melissa, I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Thank you. It's five thirty. Should we just continue through this?
I do see Commissioner Walsh's hands raised. Let, let, let's give her an opportunity to speak here.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. I, I like everything I've heard so far. I think the, the giant elephant in the room every time is that our community does not address serious mental illness. And it impacts all of our services. So I, I think as, as a community, when we be, when we can begin to understand what serious mental illness is, then we can impact it. It frightens me that we have these young deputies having to manage the seriously mentally ill in our community. And I'd like to see a much larger community involvement in managing serious mental illness in our communities. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. And Commissioner Best, your, your hand is raised again.
Going off that idea a little bit. I mentioned earlier the issue with the hospital. I'm sure everybody reads the paper and knows what's going on. I just sent a letter to Friends of Flagstaff Future proposing that we create a healthcare commission. And maybe I'll, Melissa, I'll share that with you. Basically, what the hospital's trying to do is become a true regional hospital with seven or eight hundred thousand patients, you know, from New Mexico to Utah. And I think it was done in a very awkward way because they're, they're kind of on their own. And we, we learned in the process that doctors and nurses and NIH are not communicating well. Like, I, I will admit that I got a few signatures myself for that. And some of my most enthusiastic signers were people who actually worked for NIH. So that there's a real lack of communication in the health community, and that probably impacts mental health as well. Certainly, as the population ages, mental health and dementia become more of an issue. And the population is aging rapidly. The boomers are getting old. And so the idea of a healthcare commission or somehow something that encourages more communication and coordination among healthcare providers and the public, I think is, would be useful. Both for, both to help prevent what the city just went through and is actually going through. But, but really, it's, since NIH provides healthcare for already all, most of Northern Arizona, it's a much bigger issue than just citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. And with that, Melissa, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. Well, it is five thirty-four and again, the last kind of deep dive question was to think about trends for the future. The last couple of questions were about solutions. And then how do we just really asking you all about engaging, continuing to get more ideas about engaging with the community? So I guess we could do a couple of things. We could stop here and maybe continue this next time, or we could do it via email, any sort of communication. We have, we will allocate about an hour and a half to this during the actual focus group. So tonight, we actually didn't have that hour and a half. But I think this has been very helpful to get a sense of timing, both timing and then how the questions are structured. So we do want your feedback on, on the questions themselves and the format. You know, we had kind of a list of evaluation questions. And, and that was it for tonight. So Chair Antonio Vero, however you would like to proceed, we can accommodate.
Um, okay. Do you need, would next month's study session be appropriate and timely?
It might be a little late. Yeah.
Okay, okay. The reason I ask that is based off of what we went through or looked at tonight for upcoming cases. The first three could, could very well be handled on, on a consent agenda type basis. I do get if the fourth one in fact does go through, that could be, that could be perhaps timely. But I was thinking we might have more time next month. How much longer do you think it would take to complete this?
I would think another fifteen minutes. It really depends on you all and, you know, how the thoughts that come to mind. So we, we could go, this is, August could be, we are wanting to schedule these focus groups, but it will take a lot of coordination with community members. So as long as we have your input on the questions before our first focus group is really what our goal is.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna see what my fellow commissioners would like. If anyone does not want to continue for another fifteen minutes, raise your hand. I'm not seeing, okay, hold on. Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, I see your hands raised. No, I, now I see it gone. So you know what, Melissa? No. Okay, John, your hands raised. But you're muted.
Yes, it's still there. I really think that in light of what you said at the beginning of this, that we've really addressed most of what the aspirational issues are that go into the comprehensive plan. However, just if everyone else wants to go for fifteen minutes, I'm not going to push the leave button, however. So just my two cents.
Okay, Commissioner Best? Your hand is raised. Would you like to end now?
You know, I'd like to put more into this than fifteen minutes. I'd really like to sit down for an hour or two myself and make some notes. Maybe that's not the point of this. Maybe we're supposed to do it off the cuff. But there's a lot to think about here. I, if a month from now is not soon enough, I'd be okay trying to schedule another meeting. I'd definitely fine with another fifteen minutes tonight. But I don't, you know, my thoughts just aren't very well organized. I'm just swing, trying to swing at the balls as they come at me here and, and which is okay, but I wouldn't mind thinking more about it too. So if we wanted to do another meeting, or if you want to keep going for fifteen minutes, I'm fine with either.
Well, you know what, Melissa, I'm gonna toss the ball back to you. Because I do think that we are kind of answering off the cuff. I know both Scott and I self admittedly said that we had not given this thought and you responded back with, well, sometimes that's the best way to go. Do you, how do you feel about the conversation? Do you feel we need to press the pause button right now? We all think about this a little bit better, you know, and then catch up again, you know, start, catch up where we're leaving off tonight at next month's meeting?
I would recommend if you had fifteen more minutes going through this, and then we can summarize that and bring it back to you next month for any additional thoughts. If that makes sense, because we're a bit, we're into this, we're, we're three quarters of the way through. We've gotten some great feedback. And just to keep that momentum, I would just suggest that we, we talk about trends for the future and then some solutions. And just really try to keep it very short and then we can bring it back to you next month, if that's okay. Part of this was to ask you about the questions themselves. So if you look at it later and, you know, tomorrow or later in the week, if you've got some thoughts after tonight's meeting, please email me. We are open to feedback. You're our first test case, if you will. So we really do value your feedback about not just your answers, but the questions themselves. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay, then you know what? Continue on.
Okay, thank you. Well, the next question is about trends for the future and things are changing fast. We know there's a lot of uncertainty. We know that technology is changing. The world is changing very fast. How do we respond to, to new trends that we, we think we know about, but then also think about trends that we may not necessarily be aware of at this time? So think about remote work, tourism, population growth or loss. It could, it could go either way. You know, and that's an uncertain, actually, it's, it's very uncertain how the population will grow or decline within the county. We know it's probably gonna grow in the city and in the region. Think about electric vehicles, electric bicycles even, climate change, impacts on weather uncertainty. Are there any other trends for the future? And then what comes to mind as far as those trends? We don't need to do a deep dive into solving all of them, but what are the trends that we should address in the comprehensive plan? And you can refer to this list. These are just examples, or maybe there's something that we didn't mention. Or if you think this, sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Ruggles? I, I know you previously hit on the, on, you know, having, having reliable internet service because I know that relates to, on, remote work. So I'm, I'm, I'm interested in your thoughts here. And you're, but you're muted.
I apologize for that. I was going to address something a little differently because of what Melissa just said. That we really haven't addressed the efficacy of the questions themselves. And I think I've got to look at this in terms of the Donnie Park area plan. The questions that are being posed that Melissa has put together are the kinds of questions that were brought out during the area plan update. And I can tell you absolutely for certain that the response was a little more than expected sometimes. It definitely got people responding and giving their opinions and their thoughts on everything that was involved with questions like what we are looking at or the, the go forward with this that Melissa has proposed. So that being said, I'm, I'm going to leave it at that. And by the way, I could also see I got outvoted on that fifteen minutes. So I'm here for the duration, no matter what. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. All right, Melissa, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Well, the next question would be to ask, ask community members about any ideas for solutions to any of the issues that were raised, some of the needs, if there are any other, any ideas about what the plan can do for solutions.
Commissioner Best?
Forest thinning. In my opinion, well, I, I expressed my strong opinion and we, we know that the supervisors and the council, the city council, understand the threat. But I don't see any communication happening. I don't see a regular report to the citizens who are absolutely in danger. Hundreds and hundreds of houses, if you imagine waters sweeping down through Cheshire, Coconino Estates and downtown. I am very confused about why people are not up in arms. So to me, communication on that issue is critical. By that, I mean, what is happening when? What is the schedule? What is the budget? We assume that the Forest Service is taking care of business. I would encourage everyone to Google high, high country news lost in the woods. High country news lost in the woods. That is the story of the first few years of the Four Forests Restoration Initiative. It's not a good story. I think that we need to get the council and supervisors together and have a schedule and a plan. They are as much partners in this as the Forest Service because the Forest Service controls the property. But the city and the county have to clean up the mess if the Forest Service doesn't do its job. And I think it's fair to say that the job is not getting done. All you have to do is look up from Baderville, it's not thinned. And so some plan, some schedule, regular communication. If the supervisors and the council have to go sit in the governor's office and sit in the senator's office or fly to Washington, whatever is Whatever it takes. So that. We. All know that business is getting taken care of, and it's not just the red and the flag. That's. That to me is the biggest, but I'm sure there are other forest issues out there. Just need more, more of a plan and more information and. Certainty that something is happening, because despite the billion dollar prediction. I I don't get any news about what's going on. And that's very frustrating. Uh, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Vice Chair Burton.
Yeah, I was just curious, um, does the county have grant writers on staff?
There is a grant coordinator. And so, yes.
Okay, is it just like one person, though?
Uh, to my knowledge, it is one person, but it's a newer position and um. That position has helped, you know, different departments across the county put together grant applications.
That's what, you know, for me, to me. That seems like an important. Type of position where you need more than one person. And people could submit applications to them for assistance in finding funding for. This project or this project, and that's their sole job is to go out, find these grants and write the grants in order to get the funding for it. Seems to me that there should be grants out there for expanding broadband, for forest setting, for, you know. Water reclamation, you know, uh, there, there's. There's gotta be grants out there for all these things, money that's available. And if we have a team of people looking for that money that we don't have to pay back. And we don't have to add taxes to the local tax base. Um. I I feel like that's a way that we could potentially bring in funds. I mean. I've always wondered why, why can't municipalities uh. Hurt, you know, come up with a separate little division, start acquiring funds to purchase land and build affordable housing. Stop relying on the greedy developers and figure out a way. To create housing that can be rented at a reasonable rate. That helps maintain the building, pay a property manager to do that. And have it be an application process like low income housing. But why are we relying on outside sources that are only in it for the bottom dollar? In order to create what's affordable, which is not affordable. So that's. That's one of the things that I've always questioned about, and it's the same thing with. Um. You know, I know that like homelessness and stuff, a lot of it is related to mental health, but. Why can't we have programs in place to hire people that need work that can go around and do community cleanup projects in the county? You know, but as part of a job, it's not a permanent job, but maybe it's enough to get them on their feet. You know, those are the kind of things that I've never understood why we can't create. Those kinds of opportunities and it not be astronomically expensive to the local population and tax bracket. I think that was about it. It was primarily about like that grant writing and finding the money to do some of these things. Because that always seems to be the the crux of what it comes down to is the bottom dollar and not having the funding to do things.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Burton, and um I will just say that. I feel like you flavored your comments with some good common sense there, and I'll just leave it at that. Commissioner, um. I enjoyed her comments. Commissioner Best?
Uh, lower my hand.
Okay. All right, um, all right, let's continue on.
Well, that was the last question, other than um. Continuing the continuing question about community engagement. And we have our approved public participation plan. So this is really going to be a question specific to the communities that we connect with. And. The initial focus group will be with, you know, some key people in the community who will know. Others in the community, and then we can build on that knowledge and those recommendations to to do further outreach. But it's a question we wanted to ask you as well.
Commissioner Best?
Now, I wonder what our relationship to the newspaper is and. Do we have somebody who is more or less assigned to county issues?
I do not know. I know, I mean, our public affairs office is, they're very supportive and they. Will work with us to issue press releases and um they also have contacts there. At the paper, um, you know, where we could potentially. Suggest an article. Is that what you're asking?
Well, um, I know that, you know, they have an environmental reporter. There, there, there used to be a reporter whose beat was the county. It would be nice if somebody. That you developed a relationship with. Uh, would. On some kind of a periodic basis, summarize what's going on, summarize some of the issues. Uh. You know, I I I don't know how strong the paper is now. I don't know how many people read the paper. I read the paper. But um. You know, just having that come up regularly and. Um. Using that. You know, I'm I'm not much into social media, so maybe that's how we do it these days. I don't know. Anyway. At one point, there wasn't. Uh, a reporter whose beat was. Um, the county. And it would be nice if we could identify somebody and. Develop that relationship and have that ongoing reporting. So every, you know, four months, they say this is where it's at.
Thank you for that. We we have a communications plan and that is an idea we can certainly develop further in that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and actually, Melissa, tagging on to that in in the the local papers in all of the communities, not just flag stuff.
Thank you. Yes, we do have that long list. There are a lot of other.
Okay. All right, so is that, so I'm thinking that's probably it with your presentation, right?
That that is it. We did have some questions, and what I think I'll do is I'll email you this evaluation, and that might help you. You know, to think further about the questions we asked. Do you think it will be useful? Um, you know, what could be improved? Um, the question about the time, was the time sufficient? We had about. I think we took about an hour for this, so. Um, you know, just think about was with the, would about an hour and a half be sufficient for this when we go out to the communities? Um, and then I just had a, if there are any questions. So that's pretty much it we had, and then um. I will also send everybody a link to our webpage, our website.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Melissa. On. All right, Jess, we've got the Board of Supervisors update and Commission and Staff Roundtable, and that will complete the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so Board of Supervisors update, just wanted to let you know. That CUP twenty-three oh seven, that was the cell tower in K E W. Um, that was denied by the P and Z Commission last month. Uh, the applicant appealed. Um, appealed that decision, so they will be going to the Board of Supervisors. Um, I realize it's not written on your agenda, um, but we anticipate. That that request will go to the Board of Supervisors for public hearing. More than likely on September twelfth, so September twelfth will um will most likely be the, or that's our projected Board of Supervisors public hearing for that appeal. Um, and that is our only Board of Supervisors update. So if there's any questions on Board of Supervisors actions. Um, and then uh certainly Roundtable, Madam Chair.
All right, Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you. Uh, really quick, um. One thing that I would like to direct to uh staff. Is a result of my going out on a site visit to the uh, the case that uh. Mr. McNeely just mentioned. We looked at a number of uh photo simulations. Mr. Best, uh. Not, I'm sorry, not Mr. Best, but I did for one, and. When we were out there, we had a great deal of trouble locating where those photo sims were made from. And I have one suggestion, and that in the future, staff should ask for uh coordinates for those locations, so that anyone. With a GPS. Can locate exactly where they were. We had one that uh. Just uh was literally impossible to locate, and and this affects how the analysis is done. Uh, when you start using photo simulations, and we're going to be looking at more of those in the future. So I don't think it's too much to ask. I mean, technologically, um, that's uh. And no problem at all. Uh, the GPS or GPS enabled smartphone. Uh, it's just a matter of making a note of the coordinates, uh, and it doesn't matter the format for the coordinates, uh, either one works, digital. Will be old degrees, minutes and seconds, doesn't matter, as long as we know exactly where. That photo was taken when you do a photo simulation. So that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Appreciate the input.
Um, all right, I don't see any other hands raised. This is just kind, this is just a, something I've actually been uh forgetting to bring up at previous roundtables. Um, it has been suggested by me or to me by two other commissioners. And I think it's a great idea, so I'm gonna throw it out there. But when we sign on, you see how I signed on as like Chair Antiveris, uh, Tiana, Vice Chair Burton. I think that I would like to see the other commissioners sign on as, you know, Commissioner Best, Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Walsh, so, Walsh, so on and so forth. Because. When we are in a public hearing and we have, like I'm thinking about the the one where, oh my gosh, at Greenhaven. You know, we kind of got lost in the mix there, and I would think that the public would probably want to know. Hey, who who are these people? And I think, you know, kind of identifying ourselves while we have to continue using this forum. I think that that would be a good idea. And I saw someone send a thumbs up down there on the bottom. I I don't know who that is. But on. How does anyone else feel about this? Okay, I see someone clapping now. I don't even know how you guys do this. Okay, still clapping. I think it's a good idea. How about if I say, does anyone not think it's a good idea? Raise your hand. Okay, now Commissioner Rug, okay, yours, okay. All right, I still see the clapping. How about next time when we sign on, we sign on in that new format? That's, that's all I got.
Does, does everyone know how to make that change? Is my question.
Yes, yes.
I I don't know how to necessarily how to make it, but I can probably figure it out.
Okay, it's basically kind of a a right click thing and just rename yourself in Zoom. I didn't do it for this. Because it's Teams and it's actually my NAU account, so. I'm still signed on with my team stuff, so, but in Zoom, I I have no problem going in and and changing it. But yeah, it's it's pretty simple to do. And I I definitely think it would be beneficial for the public to actually know who's who, so we're not, since we're not sitting upon a platform. Like we used to do when we were in person, it's, I think it would be a great idea for people to know, oh, hey, okay. This person's involved in the decision, this person, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm fully on board.
Diana, can can we change right now?
Um, this is Teams, so um, I've never tried to play with it on Teams. Zoom is is, it's absolutely doable on Zoom. Uh, Tammy obviously figured out how to do it in Teams.
Okay, okay, let me break this down for everyone, what Tiana was saying to you all, okay? Tammy is so technology illiterate that if she can figure it out, anyone can. That's what she's really telling you, okay? Thank you for being polite, Tiana.
Yeah, like I said, I haven't tried to do it on here, but um. It's, it's gotta be a setting somewhere, but in Zoom, it's, it's very easy to find in Zoom, which is our primary.
Right, right.
Our primary program.
Okay. All right, I think, I think that that's all we've got. I don't see any other hands raised, so how about we stay at six oh two and adjourn this study session?
Sounds great, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, okay, good night, everybody. See you next month. Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone.